I can see you.
All right, it's six thirty, I'm gonna call a work session to order the Joshua City Council one-on-one South Pliny, Joshua, Texas. Uh, this is an open meeting, so the open meeting laws in the state of Texas. Uh, this is gonna be, uh, participants with Zoom. If you do have a question that you would like to ask, uh, you can sign the speaker card and that will let us know. Or if you will email the city secretary, she will make sure your question gets read before our whole board. Uh, we do have a forum present. Uh, work session, the first item is review and discuss questions relating to the budget report and financial statements for August twenty twenty. I guess is this, or are you gonna bring up about the minimum budget now? Okay, well, does anybody have any questions then on the, uh, basically the August, August year-to-date budget?
The current stuff is going down.
Right. All right, are you having any questions, or does anybody have any questions regarding any regular session? All right, we'll go to the public forum, has anybody submitted any questions or anything, Ellis, or any comments?
No, sir.
We'll move on to the consent agenda. Uh, got two items on the consent agenda, approval of the minutes in the city council meeting held on August twentieth, and September third, and also to discuss, consider, and possible action of ordinance amending the city of Joshua's twenty nineteen, twenty twenty fiscal year budget. Anybody have any questions on either of those items, or wanna separate them out, or I'll consider a motion for both of them? I'll consider a motion for both.
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion by Jerry Moore, second by Angela Nichols, to approve the minutes in the council meeting of August twenty twenty twenty, and the September third, and to also approve the amendments to the city of Joshua twenty nineteen, twenty twenty fiscal year budget. Any other discussion, follows in favor, break me, motion carries six zero. Scott's not over yet. Uh, next we'll go into our regular agenda, I'm gonna open up a public hearing at six thirty-three, to go with the proposed budget for the fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
Yes, this is what we're used to, in terms of the public hearing, the staff presentation, which is going to be my, um, hopefully abbreviated version of what I normally use, this for the budget, uh, the proposed budget. Um, I will say the, uh, the, the proposed budget, uh, that you had in the package is not gonna diverge very much from, uh, I, I call it the adopted budget, now obviously with this, presumptuous in that and, and labeling that, uh, but the, the, the numbers you're gonna see, the, uh, packet this evening, are not gonna diverge too much from the proposed budget you guys saw back in August. Uh, and if you remember, a lot of those, uh, a lot of our line items linking to revenues, uh, and some, some year-end estimates and the expenditures were based off July numbers. As of this draft, and of this adopted budget, I had all of August, and basically half of September to work with, so, had almost all of our year-end these numbers, so, uh, the, the biggest change is going to be in the amended, uh, column, okay? In the proposed budget that you guys looked at back last month, um, that was an estimate. Well, that column is now amended, and it's gonna line up with the amended budget you guys just approved, okay? So, and the reason we do that specifically, and Jill and I were talking about this earlier, and it just as a quick reminder, whenever you guys adopt the budget, what you're doing is actually authorizing the expenditures. So, revenues are always an estimate, obviously can't authorize revenues, we're just kind of estimating what our revenue's gonna be, and of course, a big, a big chunk of those is going to be property taxes, and we've gone through how we get to those numbers. So ultimately, you're, you're authorizing the expenditures, so when we amend the budget, even though we didn't go over, uh, what was already authorized, we clean it up for the auto, for all of the purposes, and to better inform the adopted budget numbers. And the reason that's so important is because, if you'll remember, uh, back in August when we were looking at this, uh, we had the issue with the fund balance policy, right, I was having to live slightly below that twenty-five percent, uh, floor, if you will, uh, because I was waiting on some other, other franchise taxes, our big payment that comes in in August, but we didn't have yet. Um, so our final, uh, two revenue, uh, sales tax numbers, um, hadn't come yet, and yet, so, um, that, that is gonna make a difference, which is going to, the amended budget is also obviously going to, especially in the general fund, there's gonna be a year-end fund balance, and that's gonna become the starting fund balance for the next year, which is going to obviously result in an ending fund balance, that was at a one point one-six million dollars, just under our front proportion threshold. Well, and when we, when I bought the, the numbers, including all the additional revenues, we weren't expecting, we are now, we are not projecting to end next year at one point three million, which is actually above the front portion. So, uh, some of that, a lot of that was an anticipated revenue, some with COVID relief, the CARES Act funding, uh, was a big part of that, our sales tax numbers, you know, I, I projected as ending the year, uh, um, little over forty-two thousand, and we got our sales tax numbers Monday, and we ended up just over eighty-fourty-two thousand, that's what was, you know, not percent over in here, so that was actually really good, and about forty-five percent ahead of budgeted numbers. So, getting all those in there actually strengthened our fund balance, uh, very significantly, to the point where, if you remember, and this will be the, this is really the only change, uh, from the proposed budget to the adopted budget, is you remember I had to make some cuts, it's been the proposed budget, and one of those was the HSA contribution that we were making for employees, five hundred dollars in employee, um, because we ended the year, so it's much stronger than what I anticipated just a month ago, and they were able to add that back, you know? So, that was about just over twenty thousand dollar, uh, benefits to employees that we're, I'm very happy to say we're able to add that, add that back in. And not having to sacrifice some of the other equipment to be the favorability that they had requested, so, all in all, very, very pleased with that, how the budget ended up. Um, the, I'll just go over the, uh, kind of the highlights, uh, if you wanna look at, pay, uh, page twelve, uh, is the global, the global budget, this is all the funds, uh, it's just, uh, I guess it's technically page twelve of the budget, I don't know what page it is in the packet, I don't have the page numbers. Yeah, so it's this sheet, page twelve on the budget, should, should say page twelve down here.
Mayor.
So you're in the middle, right, Gerald, is it the amended budget, or if you think it's more, or if you'll get into the proposed, yeah, there you go. So, uh, all right, everybody gets on this page.
Mayor.
This page here.
Scottson.
It's the next section there, so, Rick, the next packet? These flip lines. In your packet, the big, one had this clip on. Yes, sir. Now, it's page twelve of the budget document itself, I, I don't, I don't recall what page it is of the packet, I need to make sure that that's the one.
Okay.
Um, so everybody's on the, we should be on the global, uh, the global statement of revenues expenditures, okay? Uh, starting over from the far right-hand side, we have our audited numbers, we have the amended numbers, and that's gonna be what you guys just approved, and those, those projected year-end revenues, and then the adopted column, uh, which is, uh, the sum of the four columns, the general fund, debt service fund, capital equipment fund, and the other fund, the other fund be our two core funds, court security and court technology, type A and type, uh, B EDCs, okay? So, uh, all in all, when it's all said and done, uh, we have a total, total revenues, which includes, uh, if you look at the adopted F Y E twenty, twenty-one column, uh, we have total revenues of twelve point three million. Uh, you will notice that that includes proceeds from leases of bonds that we just issued, uh, the closing on the bonds that were, uh, we issued and that were, approved by the voters last November, is on the twenty-third of this month, okay? So, we'll be getting those funds almost immediately after the closing of that, and that's what that three point nine eight is. And the transfers in, that is all of the transfers in, obviously that, how the, how the funds interact with each other, so, just, uh, twelve point three million dollars in revenues, um, and then, uh, thirteen point five million dollars in, uh, total expenditures, which also push transfers out, which is also obviously gonna, and backtracks those in, we talked about the funds, uh, accounting issues there. The ending fund balance, uh, two point two, uh, beginning fund balance, the very top of three point five million, and the ending fund balance of two point two total. And that two point two is a little bit more consistent with what we normally have in a year on a global year-end basis, but we're starting out really high because of the all, all the unanticipated revenues, and that we had this year that were well over the budget that we had adopted, so, that is the, uh, kind of the global bird's eye view, um, and again, like I referenced earlier, the general fund, this is where the front balance policy is really getting me to play, one thing that we're really concerned about, because the general fund, um, funds that, the M and L maintenance operations part of the city, you're getting potholes filled, bills paid, and employees, personnel, that sort of thing, so, we're projecting an ending fund balance of one point three million, just really healthy considering we're using one point one million dollars of our reserves for the construction project. So, uh, very happy, we got, we got really, you know, as they say sometimes, it's gotta be lucky to good, and when it came, if twenty twenty, or COVID even was good, we even been really strong in our revenues. So, we have overall, um, on page fourteen of the budget, uh, this gives us to kind of the year-over-year differences that we adopted. So, uh, what we have is the far right column kind of shows the, uh, the differences, what we got from last year versus what we're looking at this year, changes. Uh, about ten, ten percent more in revenues, um, and of course, we count transfers in, uh, eleven point, eleven percent more in revenues, uh, just, just over five percent more in our M and L expenditures, okay? Uh, and then, uh, obviously the big one here, uh, that is going to, uh, make, make the biggest difference in the overall expenditures of twenty-one percent, is the use of those reserves, okay, which is the transfers out, um, to other funds, and that one point one, uh, one point one million dollars from coming out of the general fund is going to the C I P, uh, to, uh, fund that Joshua Station project, and if you remember, uh, some of what, not all of that, about six hundred thousand of that is for that Joshua Station project, the remaining of those transfer funds for the C I P equipment, and the C I P budget itself, the ones, the, the, uh, the equipment that made it in, obviously we couldn't fund everything, so, um, and that kind of, that gives you the total there. Um, we break it a little bit more, uh, we break it down a little bit more in terms of the categories and the different line items that go into revenues there. Um, as you can see, one of the things, a couple of things I wanted to point out, I already talked about, if you look at the adopted, the two middle columns, the adopted budget versus the amended budget there, you can see that the, the big difference in, or significant difference in the sales tax, you know, there's where our increase was there. Uh, obviously, building permits and fees is something we did not anticipate, uh, and it, where, and actually, it'll actually be higher than that. Uh, we're still, you know, obviously we still continue to work day in and day out on this stuff, so it's likely we end up with higher number than that. What we're seeing now is almost, uh, not quite double, but pretty close to it, and I was still conservative when I dropped that back down to three fifteen, uh, you know, for next year. We did see a, uh, and one thing that we'll talk about here in a minute, we get to the E S D contract, uh, when I drafted this, and not having the contract number, so that actually will go up a little bit, one thing, to one fifty-six, one fifty-three-ish year, um, and then the, uh, fine, the fines and court fees, you know, that's one thing that's kind of been all over the place, uh, the last few years, and it's, it's continued to decrease. Uh, uh, and so, if you're, if you're wondering why, we had it at one twenty-five in terms of the adopted budget, now lowered it to ninety-six, now we're back at twenty-five, that is assuming a fully staffed police department, that we actually had more citations being issued, so it's, it is a little bit of a, of an estimate there. Um, the fire department grant, again, we are including that this year, that's a safer grant, uh, obviously, we know we got it this year, and so that will be part of the budget. Um, miscellaneous funds, I wanted to, you know, point that out, uh, the two hundred thirty thousand, uh, that will be a big chunk of that is the, uh, the CARES Act funding. And some of the rest, we have some other things in terms of, uh, things that go into that line, uh, insurance, you know, uh, we had, it's a vendor business this year, so, um, in terms of, we don't account for them in the expenditure line, it all goes to miscellaneous revenues, we had, uh, three or four auctions that we'd be really well at, so that number just was pretty swollen this year. But, like I say, the biggest, uh, the biggest, uh, part of that was the CARES Act funding. Uh, and then we dropped, obviously, um, the transfer for the type B E D C, um, that was mainly for, uh, the transfer from, that we adopted course for part, uh, maintenance. Uh, we drove, we were able to drop that quite a bit, because as you, as you might imagine, not having the slash pad on, uh, this year, I'd say it's about eight thousand sixty-five thousand dollars in utility costs, so we dropped that leg down. Of course, we're hoping things get back to normal, uh, next year, we're gonna open that back up, so that is, uh, increased back up to the two thirty-six, and then a, a, a large part of that is that park project, it's not be approved for the Cooper Valley development, the new, the new face there, which is about six thousand dollars in approved part, so. And then, uh, the last thing, I guess I'll touch on, and I'll open it to, well, I guess, that would be the comments, uh, is on the last, page sixteen, which is just kind of the, uh, the overall categorization of our expenditures, uh, and again, the five point two-one percent of the increase. Um, and again, that is mainly due to having a fully staffed, uh, police department, and having the three four fire fighters is where you see that significant change in the public safety line, with one point six to two point million, uh, two point million dollars, uh, a big part of that is that the new employees are in that part of it. So, you know, all the, the trickle-down effect it has, benefits, and insurance, and payroll taxes, and all that sort of thing, so. At that, I'll, for our staff presentation.
All right, did we have anybody that wants to speak?
No, sir.
Anywhere or against?
No, sir.
Anything you want to rebuttal? All right, we're gonna close the public hearing at six forty-seven, uh, now we'll discuss, consider, take action from adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Scott. Yeah, saw that. Does anybody have any questions on the budget?
No, I, I think this year, this is a lot where, considering how many adjustments and amendments is on this compared to previous year.
But I think Josh did an excellent job.
It's a totally different, but.
Um, it's, it's a really good work, Charlie.
I will say.
Josh did a squeezing blood on those.
Well, like I say, it's sometimes very likely good, and we were very beneficial to the community, that because we are so conservative in our budget to begin with, that when the lockdown, lockdown happened, affected so many cities so dramatically, we didn't feel it, and, and luckily, we had the opposite, it was opposite for us, we were above budget and sales tax, so we really didn't feel the little effects of that. Um, I will say, and I, I mean, that's something, um, I would, uh, I proposed back in August, uh, but because we actually ended the year so much stronger than I thought we would just a month ago, um, you know, we, and if you look at the very front page of the budget, this is one of those things about the state mandated wording, that really irritates me, um, we have this notice that we have, we're mandated to put on the very front page of the budget, it says, this budget will raise more in total property taxes, so last year's budget, about just, almost eleven thousand dollars, a point two nine percent, that is the difference, if you remember, between our current rate and the no new revenue rate, it's point three nine percent, literally three thousand dollars. And of that amount, this is what I don't like about it, uh, now almost ninety-two thousand is a new tax revenue based on new properties, so, we are, we will have property tax revenue increase, but that, most of it is based off of new properties, okay, newer improvements. So, back in August, when I proposed this budget, I needed that eleven thousand dollars, I really did, uh, but we ended the year so, so strongly, um, I would actually recommend, uh, dropping the tax rate to the no new revenue rate, uh, this year, um, it's eleven thousand dollar difference, and I think we can, uh, you know, I think you guys went a long way in adopting the homestead exemption, and I think, and, and as you can imagine, the homestead exemption is probably what drove it down so low in terms of the increase from the previous year, uh, but I think that was in the good, it continued to send a good message to the community in terms of, of, uh, you know, you're not gonna be paying the city any more taxes than you did the previous year, and not even the ten grand, which is about eight dollars a person, so, you know, uh, given that, uh, we have so much more revenue than I did last year, I think that could be something you might as well consider.
Any questions?
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Scott.
Uh, did I understand you say you were recommending lowering the tax rate?
You heard him right.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, it's not gonna be a lot, Scott, like I say, that the difference between, the difference between the current rate and no new revenue rate is point three nine percent, so it's not gonna be a lot of difference, it's, it'll, it's about eleven thousand dollars, like, like we just talked about, but I think it is something, and, you know, I think it's a continuation of the, the, uh, you know, just the sentiment, I think the city was under their council's, uh, intent, and they adopted the homestead exemption to begin with, especially this year.
Well, hey, if it'll buy me a couple of cups at our new Starbucks, I'm in good shape. Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions? All right, then we got a couple of, uh, not really housekeeping issues, but when we go to make the budget for the, uh, the motion for the budget, it will have to be read exactly like it's almost a little one-page handout, and we'll actually have to have two votes, we'll have to do the first motion, uh, vote on it, uh, then do the second motion and vote on it, and Terry, are you still there?
I am.
Uh, we had a question, do we have to do a roll call vote on the budget?
Budget and tax have to be record votes, yes, sir.
Okay, so both budget motions will be record votes, and then the tax rate will be a record vote.
Right.
Okay, thank you. So would anybody like to make the motion?
I'll make the motion number one, moving to approve an ordinance adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one annual budget for the fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one as proposed.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Jerry Moore, second by Angela Nichols, to approve the ordinance adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one annual budget for the fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one as proposed, as proposed. Anybody else have any other questions? Then this will be a roll call vote, Jerry, approved, Joe, approved, approved, Angela, Mike, approved, Rick, Scott?
Approved.
Thank you, motion carries seven zero. Now we need to make the second motion. Okay, the question is, is do we have to make the second motion if we lower the rate? What we're actually having to do here, and this is where the, the state legislature still tries to make a slip path, uh, additional revenue is the revenue that's coming in from new homes. We are actually keeping the same rate, and we're not raising any more money under their rules from last year, but since we're bringing in additional income, we still have to do the second motion, because the bottom line is, we are bringing in more money, because we've got more properties that are paying. Can I answer your question? Well, if we're looking back to the no new tax rate, then we still have to do this? Yeah, we still have to do it. I move to ratify the property tax revenue increase as reflected in the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one adopted budget.
I'll second.
Okay, Mike, big shift. I got a motion by Robert Perdell, second by Mike Kidd, to ratify the property tax revenue increases reflected in the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one adopted budget. For any further discussion? I'll start with you, Scott.
Approved.
Rick?
Approved.
Mike? Angela? Joe, approved, Jerry, approved. Uh, motion carries seven zero. All right, now we get to the tax rate. And I think Josh has done an outstanding job with that budget together, and, and coming back to us and telling us that it's actually looking, as far as the revenue side goes, a lot better. Uh, I, for one, would like to see us go to the no new revenue rate, I think that shows our citizens that we're trying to do what we can, we're watching our piece of shoes, and, uh, I think this is just a simple message, it's not a big amount, so I don't think it'll impact us that much, but it's showing them that with the homestead exemption in this, that we're very definitely looking, trying to look out for what they're having to be. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Uh, so, so in this motion, the, the, the motion number one, we would change that tax rate that's there to the no new revenue tax rate?
Correct.
Okay, I move that the property tax rate be?
No, you have to read, you have to see, you know, you got, I'm gonna have to have one of the guys here read it, if that's all right, Scott.
Okay, go ahead.
I move to adopt the twenty twenty maintenance and operation tax rate for the no new revenue rate, point seven six one two four oh, to the operation tax rate of point five seven six oh five.
Okay, we're up second.
I'll second.
All right. You're on the bottom, right? Yeah, yeah, right. Now, a motion by Jerry Moore, second by Scott Kimball, to adopt for twenty twenty maintenance and operations tax rate of point five seven six zero five. For any further discussion? Jerry, you first, approved, Joe, approved, all right, Angela, approved, approved, all right, motion carries seven zero. And now we have to have the second motion, which will be the debt service, oh, I'm sorry, Scott, you want to approve this?
I'll approve.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike.
All right, so now we need motion two for the debt service.
I'm moving to adopt the twenty twenty debt service tax rate of point one eight five one nine.
Second. We got a motion by Jerry Moore, second by Mike Kidd, to adopt the twenty twenty debt services tax rate of zero point one eight five one nine. For any further discussion? Uh, Scott?
I'll approve.
And Rick?
Approved.
Mike, approved, Angela? Robert, approved, Joe, approved, Jerry, approved, motion carries seven zero, very good, thank you, Dylan. Can I ask you a quick question, Josh? Sure. Josh, will our CARES Act and our safer grant count against this next year on the no new revenue rate?
Well, no, because neither one of those flow through property tax.
And plus the general fund.
Yeah, that's just general fund, so, and no new revenue.
That's not gonna affect us, you know, so, that's a lot of money. Yes, it's a great question. All right, I'm gonna open up another public hearing at six fifty-eight for a zoning change from restricted commercial district C one to the residential single district R one, a point three two one acre tractable land located in the College Edition Lot One, Lot Three, locally known as one-on-one East Twentieth Street, Joshua, Johnson County, Texas, seven six zero five. The purpose of this request is to allow the usage of the property as a single-family residential home. Aaron.
Mayor and council, this property was zoned commercial back in two thousand and eight, and at one time in the heritage overlay district. In June of this year, chapter fourteen of the zoning code of ordinance was changed, and the property was taken out of the heritage overlay district. The use of the building on the property has always been as, as, as a residential home and should continue. The future land use plan, as shown in the adopted comprehensive plan, uh, the city designates this area as residential single family. The proposed rezoning request complies with the future land use plan, and on September, uh, eighth of this month, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved the zoning change for one-on-one East Twentieth Street, and has made a recommendation to the city council members for approval. Uh, the only cost associated with zoning change requests is the publication expense and mailing of, uh, public hearing notices to property owners within two hundred feet, as required by law, which there was a total of fifteen, with only, uh, one responding, and they were in favor.
Thank you, Aaron, uh, does Oliver have any comments he would like to make recently?
No, sir.
Okay, does anybody send in anything for being in favor, other than one that Aaron just mentioned?
No, sir.
Or any against? No rebuttal, we'll close the public hearing at seven o'clock, and before I go further, I would like to, uh, make note that we have a gentleman that's watching our meeting tonight, one of Joshua's finest, Mitchell Moore, he's actually serving in the Navy, studying to be a pilot, he just also happens to be the son of Councilman Jerry Moore, but Mitchell's down in Corpus Christi, and I think that's correct, that he's following our meeting tonight, so, thanks for watching us, Mitchell. All right, all right, next, uh, discussed, considering, take muscle action on the ordinance approving zoning change from the restricted commercial C ones to residential single-family R ones on the three point two one acre tractable land located in the College Edition Lot One, Lot Three, locally known as one-on-one East Twentieth Street. Anybody have any questions about this? This is one of them. It was in the historical overlay. It got its own commercial. And they're willing to flip it back to residential, which is what it was before. I don't know whether anybody's been by there and seen that house, but they did an excellent job. I mean, they really spitted it up. It looks really good.
Did the applicant have to pay any fees associated with this change?
I think they said he had to pay for the bailout.
He had to pay an application fee. Josh, do you know how much it is? I can't remember. Aaron, how much is the application for zoning change, the fee?
Oh, I think it's like maybe 50.
But that's all they will.
That's perfect. And that covers everything we need to do.
Anybody else have any other questions? I think we have heard. I'll second. Got a motion by Jerry Moore, seconded by Mike Kidd to approve the ordinance for the zoning change for the resident, moving from restricted commercial C1 to residential single-family R1 for 101 East 20th Street. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Scott?
Yes, sir.
Seven zero. Next item is discussed considering take possible action of ordinance amending section 3.05.003 residential uses of Article 3.05 fences of Chapter 3 Building Regulations and Code of Ordinances by amending provisions relating to the height of the fences of residential property. This is the one we talked about last month. We had to move it back and forth on the council, but basically it was raising it from a maximum of six feet to eight feet. They would still have to come in and do a permit, but it wouldn't require going before the city council to do that. Anybody have any questions, discussion? I think we only had two such questions. I think I've had around four or five. Is it really something that we need to change the ordinance on? I know. Well, I mean, my question is, it's just one of those things that, you know, it's making people have to come in and pay money for something that's, I think it's pretty standard. What is the fee that the?
I think it's a hundred dollars.
Is there any way to reduce that fee down?
The way you're classing, a hundred dollars.
Yeah, but then you got the time for the block too. Where you gotta do it and you gotta wait. You know, I know in our HOA, it's not gonna make a difference. For that Cook Valley and Wildwood and, well, Parry's. And it's pretty valid, that's why. Any of those, it's not gonna matter, but everywhere else it will, right?
Yeah, I see it. I see it in my neighborhood. It's a concern, because again, nobody, your neighbor in the San Francisco area, you know, and just for the rest of the neighborhood, you know, it just sticks out, you know? We're not in HOA like Joshua Meadows and have all the neighborhood requirements and stuff, you know? We're all just a saver, you know, but it is what it is there. I'm not a fan of it, but I don't think it's gonna have a disparate impact here.
I don't think it's gonna drive people to go out and change their fence. I mean, it's expensive to go to an eight-foot fence. I think most people, it's from a security issue. They're not.
They expect to have an extra two feet.
Yeah, to go do that.
Won't do it unless it's, the only two times that I've been here and we approved it because of elevation. And they did it to elevate to adjacent six-foot fence because of the elevation of the back.
Yeah, I think we actually had three.
Makes us just bitter, but.
We've had the two on Main Street and then we had the one in Cooper. So that's three in a year, so.
But I, are we gonna make motion right here?
You ready?
I'll make motion to approve the change to the ordinance.
I'll second.
The thing you did, Scott, slow the draw to half. All right, we got a motion to approve amending section 3.05.003 residential uses of Article 3.05 fences of Chapter 3 Building Regulations and Code of Ordinances by amending provisions relating to the height of fences of residential property. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Both. Motion carries seven zero. Next, discuss, consider, and take possible action ordinance amending Article 4.02 Garage Sales of Chapter 4 Business Regulations and Code of Ordinances by removing any reference to garage sales of non-residential property in the city. Aaron, did you have anything you want to say, Angela?
Sure. Mayor and council, Chapter 14 of the Zoning Code of Ordinances was amended in June of this year. And in the zoning ordinance, garage sales were listed in the table of use as a max of two times a year for residents. There's also a standalone ordinance in Chapter 4 of the Code of Ordinances that reverses garage sales on non-residential property. The purpose of amending Article 4.02 is to let it corresponds with the zoning ordinance of permitting garage sales on residential property only.
And like part of what just came up is we've got a property that I don't write specifically, but we've had very many garage sales to commercial property. And I can tell you how many comments I've gotten about that makes the city really look bad because they wouldn't do it, so. Anybody else have any questions about this? Basically, it's just saying that if you have garage sales, it's got to be in residential. It does influence like a church having a garage sale or something like that. Scott?
Well, churches are typically going to be zoned by law, and so probably it shouldn't, it wouldn't be a problem to sell one of those. It's a squishy zone properties that we want to, because right now the issue is the competition, the conflict we have in the update, so.
So it wouldn't affect, wouldn't affect that.
I don't see how it would work when you have a model example.
Yes, is it going to be affected by any properties that may have been switched to commercial that are still residential? Like the one we just approved today. I know there's not many.
Yeah, we have that little thing going on. You have somebody that's used, right? So you have somebody that's a commercial business. Just because they happen to have an R1 zoning, you're still using that as a commercial business. So the issue is, is we're referring to these commercial properties, and you have a use and you have a zone as well. The issue with the churches is, if not an issue, it's like we're on use. You have a zoning in place there. It's really a commercial.
So it shouldn't be, it shouldn't. It shouldn't.
That's not, yeah, that's not the point of making the change. Obviously, the conflict is, they have different ones. That's where we're gonna be changing this.
Okay, I've had a request from one of the folks that's listening in, Mr. Hostison. He's asked if the council could speak louder. He says he can hear me just fine, but everybody else can speak up. And I know Rick has an issue sometimes hearing as well, so we all need to make sure we're talking clear and loud. Any other questions on this particular change?
I move we approve the ordinance.
Scott, you want a second?
No, sir.
I'll second. Come on, man. You left us hanging.
All right, we got a motion by Jerry Moore, seconded by Mike Kidd to approve the ordinance amending Article 4.02 Garage Sales of Chapter 4 Business Regulations of the Code of Ordinances by removing any reference to garage sales of non-residential property in the city. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Solve the problem, hopefully. All right, next item is discuss, consider, and take possible action on a contract between Johnson County Emergency Services District Number 1 and the City of Joshua for providing fire extinguishment and other emergency services and authorizing the mayor to sign. Josh, any comments?
I do not have any comments. This is the same wording that we fought so hard for. That is the same wording from our current contract. The, obviously, it's been updated to reflect the upcoming fiscal year on page 10. Paying for services where the updated numbers from 123 to 156 for the upcoming year. And I will say that the incentive program in the appendix with the SAFER grant, the full-time staff that we have coming online, the whole point, one of the issues there is it's hopefully getting qualified for more of the incentives. So I do, this year I did budget a little bit in terms of incentives from the ESD based on historical, what we've been getting. We've been getting about half, about half of what we're eligible for. We should be getting almost all of that this year with the SAFER grant, so at least that's the best of all.
Because of having more drivers.
Yeah, having full-time staff.
Actually make the call.
There's one comment I'll make. I completely deranged this, but the ESD is actually actively going out and it's gonna be calling for collection to collect sales tax on folks that live in the county to help pay for those services that they're providing. And they're estimating it'll be somewhere between a billion and $2 million that that will bring in. That would not impact us, excuse me, on the collection at all, but I have been told that that should increase significantly the amount of money that we would be receiving each year. So if anybody stops and asks you, that's gonna be coming up. I'm not sure. I don't think they have it on the November ballot, but I think they're shooting maybe for next May to get that out there and pass that from the county.
And this is authorized the mayor's side, not the city man?
Correct, yes.
Just double check.
Anybody else have any questions on that contract?
Just a quick question. Do we know what that incentive is? Because it's not listed. It shows the percentage of payouts. It doesn't say what payout would be. Well, I mean, it says, you know, if you're 98%, or you receive 98%, 98% of what?
Of what you're eligible for. So they align a certain amount. And once you meet the threshold, you get the percentages of those amounts.
But we don't know what those lock-ins are.
Well, at the time of this, they have 30 minutes to knock to the bucket. So we don't know.
I think historically it's been, you know, on an annual basis up to about like $10,000.
I would say it's been $10,000, $12,000 over the year.
Yeah.
About 10 the last couple of years.
Right.
Right? And that's gonna be obviously per, you know, per month, we'll be giving you that per month.
It just doesn't seem like a very big incentive where you're talking. If you max it out for $10,000 for the entire year on $156,000, that's not much incentive. Yeah, $10,000. What's our, what's our part and part of the budget?
This year? $600,000.
Yeah, $670,000. So thanks, ESD.
Anybody else have any questions? I'll entertain a motion then.
I'll make the motion that we approve, has been.
I'll second. Got a motion by Mike Kidd, seconded by Robert Purdon to approve the contract from the Johnson County Emergency Services District Number 1 and the City of Joshua for providing fire extinguishment and other emergency services and authorizing the mayor to sign. Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor? Seven oh. Next item, discuss, consider, and take possible action of authorizing the expenditure of $3,800 to Johnson County for brush cuts for Eddie Street, County Road 1023, and County Road 909. Mike?
Mayor, this is the same similar contract we've done in years past for they'll bring out a mower that's on a boom attachment. Allows them to get up into the trees and along the fence rows. And this thing does the job considerably quicker than we could do it with staff alongside the road.
And this is where it's gonna go out Eddie, where Eddie turns into 909. Where's 1023?
1023 is just a little farther to the south.
Okay, that's where.
Towards Indian Hills.
Okay.
Are these city streets or counties?
They're city street.
It is in the county, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's another double tax.
Did you ask him if we got a break, Mike?
I haven't spoken to him. Kristen has arranged this. But I'm pretty sure what that answer is.
Yeah.
And I think you are too.
A 76 per hour for 50 hours of work.
I move we approve.
Second. We got a motion by Scott Kimball, seconded by Mike Kidd to approve the expenditure of $3,800 to Johnson County for brush cuts for Eddie Street, County Road 1023, and County Road 909. Further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Next, discuss, consider, and take possible action on four appointments. Alice has done a great job on this, putting it together about who's expiring. It's got showing who's gonna be moving into what positions. One little caveat I wanted to make, and I talked to one of the folks, and I think there was only one or two other people that were involved. We've got some people that are wanting to serve on more than one board, which we've tried to not do that. But since we got openings, we're sort of forced to have to do that so we can have full representation on the boards. I did talk to Merle. I saw him today. He wouldn't have a problem still being reappointed as an alternate. And he would go to the meetings while we have a vacancy, but then if we had somebody that came in and wanted to be in that position, then they would automatically move in. It wouldn't be like we had to take Merle off to put somebody else in. So I think we had three folks that this applied to. John Malden is on PNC, and he's asked to be put on the Heritage Overlay. And what I would suggest is he can go in as an alternate. That way he can still go to all the meetings. If there's not enough people there, which right now, if we do have a vacancy, then he would be able to fill in. But if somebody came up that wasn't on any boards, wanted to get into it, then they would automatically decide into that slot. So it was John Malden, Melissa Quensher wanted to get on the library board. I'm on the library board. That's not, we don't make a whole lot of decisions with that one, so I don't really see the issue there. We don't have openings, but I think that one would suffice. And then Merle would be an alternate on the CBA until such time that we had a person that wanted to apply and serve in a full-time position on that job. So what I'll do is I'll make the motion then that will approve all the entries that, reappointing old people, appointing the new folks, and anybody that's serving as a, on an existing board and being appointed to a second playfield in as an alternate.
Excuse me, Mayor. I'm sorry. On the heritage preservation.
Right.
It requires one, when it is zoned and numbered. That's why Mr. Malden signed up. Sorry, I didn't think about that earlier.
So we'll let you be on that. Make the call then. All right, so with that one change, it's basically what I mentioned in my motion.
I'll second the motion.
Got a motion by Joe Horne, seconded by Jerry Moore to approve the appointments to the boards with the changes that were recommended. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Next, discuss, consider, and take action on JISD Coronavirus Relief Funds Match Request.
You want to talk about that? Yes, that's, I can do that real quick, believe it or not. So if you remember, the meeting last time, we had this in the work session, we discussed the request from the school district to assist in the funding of these hotspots. They were asking for a total of $37,500. The council had asked for some additional information from the IISD, which is, which was, what percentage of the ISD students are over this year is from those of the city? Approximately 25% of the enrollment is from students of within the city. How many hotspots are going or have gone to students that live in the city? So far, as far as given, 57 hotspots to addresses within the city so far. And they said addresses rather than students because my, siblings there. And this could increase. They said this could increase if it's a quarantine status, students locally. I think the numbers came out. We're saying five, maybe, totally our district, so lovely, that's good there. And then in terms of reaching out to other local governments, they contacted the judge, and because of some restrictions, they were not able to contribute. The county wasn't. The city of Cleveland had not, they had not actually committed from them. I had to admit speaks to city manager about this only, and they were looking at doing maybe a, setting up a, an amount not to exceed and then a total amount not to exceed, and then based on the number of students they had in Joshua and Cleveland, giving that way. And then based on the number of students they had in Joshua and Cleveland, giving that way. So it wouldn't be a whole lot, as you can see, it's only less than two percent of the students uh living in the city of Cleveland. And the city of Burleson also said they were willing to contribute, but had not received a commitment of fifty percent of their circle. And that wasn't, versus when you do the math, there's a lot in the county. Uh but uh so what I did is I took uh the the I S D request for most thirty-three, seven, fifty, rather. Uh twenty, twenty percent of the students actually resigned to the city of Joshua uh for the city's pro-rated share of that number. And my numbers on that, I made a typo here. I think, I think that is, I'm gonna get my calculator real quick.
That should be right.
I think it is. I think it's based on the thirty-seven five. We got thirty-seven, seven, fifty in the American state. Well, so actually that's thirty.
Now thirty-three, seven, fifty is what they were asking for.
Yeah, and that, and that is the correct number, so that disregard that thirty-seven five. Uh so our pro-rated share is approximately uh a little over eighty-four hundred dollars.
And so I think this would be going towards a good cause. It would be helping out. We went with the twenty-five percent. It's helping out our students. That's what the CARES Act is for. It was to help uh out uh what was related to COVID. I think this is a very good uh solution to use in some of those funds to something that's directly related to the COVID virus. Uh I said I'd be okay with doing our twenty-five percent.
I got some questions. What happens if they don't use all seven hundred P D? Do they have to pay for those? There's fifteen dollars a month for all seven hundred P D. And then what happens if one of these fifty-seventh kids comes back to school? They turn their hotspot in? And do we still have to pay for it? And if we're only using fifty-seven, there's nowhere near twenty-five percent.
Well, so far they they have to be set aside.
Right. But also some of them are going back to school too. But when you, when you figure that out, these things cost about forty-five dollars a piece is what they're asking for. After they take off what the CARES Act is. Uh that comes up to about twenty-five hundred and sixty-five dollars a year with the fifty-seven that Joshua has. I think to go to the eight thousand is really I mean, they got a whole lot bigger tax base than we did. And we've already spent all of our CARES money.
No, well, we, we have. All that we have absolutely reimbursement for is for funds we've already spent. Uh so uh and as we talked about last time, both, most of those funds that we were asked to reimburse them for is public safety wages. So we were going to spend those funds because they're in the budget already, so we were going to spend them regardless of the CARES Act. So uh the way your CARES Act was, was written though, because it's, it's uh assumed that public safety was going to be impacted by the virus in response to that, localities could request reimbursement for the, those wages for public safety. So uh when we had a four hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollar allotment for allocation, uh you know, our, our, that's half, that's our P D alone, it's that half of that. And so we obviously wait for uh some P P E that we did uh and the total that we submitted. It would extinguish basically all the funds we requested have already been spent, if you will. But when we get the funds, it'll be a uh, what I can term a windfall, uh if you will.
Well, unless I believe that percent, we'd be paying for about a hundred and eighty-seven of the hotspots, if my math is.
I'm not kidding. Your math, your math is the same. It says they cost a hundred and eighty dollars. Uh because we're going twelve months and fifteen dollars a month, which that's a hundred and eighty dollars. You take a hundred and eighty times fifty-seven. And that comes up to ten thousand dollars.
Yes, but that's the total cost. They get reimbursed through the CARES Act for a big part.
Yeah, they get whatever we recommend and they'll get an additional matching fund.
Right, but CARES Act pays a certain part of this thought. When I, when I read. I don't know. I I'm still back to the fact, I think, of type of people that are residents of Joshua and not necessarily the whole bunch that are.
I, I think that's, even when we're talking eight thousand, talking ten thousand, I like the idea of the twenty-five percent. The number that's, that's here, the eighty-four, forty, I'm, you know, I'm okay with. Because I look at it as, yes, fifty-seven hotspots. But I promise you, there's more than one child in twenty of those. And so it's, it's gotten bigger impact than, than we're seeing here just on the hotspots. And such, so the, the number of children impact in our city part. I think for the windfall that we're looking at, Josh has done a fantastic job kind of planning for that and such. I don't see that it's going to have a negative impact on us at all. And so I would definitely recommend the eighty-four forty.
I think it's sort of sending a message to the school tonight. We're willing to work with them. And maybe when we get a few trials, we're looking for, maybe there'll be a little bit more. Jeff, because they're getting a matching amount for this, so they're going to come out in pretty good shape and, you know, then when we go to ask for something, we'll uh hopefully they'll listen to us and reciprocate.
Well, I think a lot of times we use the stadium and there's things that we do, you know, that, that they, they assist us with.
Anybody else?
I'll make the motion that we approve the eighty-four forties out of their funding to the uh district.
Well, second, I second. As we're trying to finish the question. Uh we got a motion by Jerry Moore, seconded by Angela Nichols, to approve the J I S D Coronavirus Relief Funds Match Request, which we will be paying twenty-five percent or eight thousand four hundred and forty dollars. Uh any further discussion?
No, but I just want to add how well Josh prepared for this.
Please speak up, Angie.
I said, I want to commend Josh on the job well done because we asked him a lot of work to do, you know, extra work to do. And he did.
Well, I don't, I appreciate the kind words.
Alice.
Yeah, no, it was, it was a, it was a finance director from school when I gathered the information. So I appreciate the kind words, but at least in terms of the data here, I just voted it for you guys.
You did. And I watched you all.
I, I, I'm going to vote opposed to this because eighty percent of the students are back in class. Eighty percent. Um I just, I just don't see the need for it. And I, that, that's why I oppose it.
So we've got a vote on that before, so.
Yeah, so I got a motion.
Part of the discussion, Gary.
Seconded by Angela. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries five two. Next, staff reports. Anybody have any questions on staff reports?
And so we're, we're still at fifty-two percent inadequate staffed on our fire department? Response? Josh?
Sir?
We're still at fifty-two percent without adequate staff responses?
That's correct.
And how quickly does, does the chief believe that the safer grant people are going to change that?
Well, we have yet to formulate a timeline in terms of when we're going to advertise those positions. We're, we're still trying to uh, we're in the process of finalizing the requirements for those spots. So we're hoping to have all three of those in place by the end of the year. Uh at least that's on, you know, kind of a quick turnaround timetable. Uh I, I couldn't speak to any type of percentage increase or percentage uh improvements. But that is, again, as part of the, part of the reason the safer grant was so important, that, that we were able to improve those numbers. So uh that's the intent, but I couldn't speak to how quickly or by what percentage we, we would hope to see that improve. Until we, until we actually have them on the ground and we actually have some, some numbers in place that we can show you.
Okay.
But that's certainly the intent.
Where are we at on Public Works personnel?
Same spot. It's uh again, I, I, I got mentioned earlier, I think I actually sent an email to the staff about the HSA contributions that, you know, luckily we were able to squeeze that back in. Uh and a lot of that was because we got lucky revenues. The unlucky part of that is both the Public Works and Police Department being unable to step apart for the entire year. So a lot of our savings on the expense side came at the expense, if you will, of our personnel. So we're still at uh two spots. Mike, Mike, if you're coming correct there, step in. But in total, I think we're down to two, two of the spots still.
Still in Public Works, where's that least one?
I'm, we're down one at that.
Now, Mike, didn't you say that we were hiring two people for Public Works?
Yeah, we've got two people that, one of them has already started. The other one's due to start the first of next week. Uh we just got his information back on him this week, so he'll, he'll be on board. I, he the next week or the week after, and that'll have us one down.
So we're just, is P D still down one?
Yes.
So that's all on the staff.
Andrew?
I just have a question. Uh what's the starting salary for Public Works?
Right, uh Mike, is it thirteen, fourteen, I want to believe? An hour?
I didn't hear the question, Josh.
The starting base of Public Works, I want to say it's thirteen, fourteen. We, we changed it this year to be.
Yeah, it went up to, I think, fourteen and a quarter.
Fourteen, yeah, that's right, because we, it was down close to just over twelve, but because we weren't able to get the applicants, there was actually a fifth position. So right now, remember, we had two positions in parks. We swung those over to Public Works to get more of the scientific effect there. Uh there's a fifth position in Public Works that we're using to use those funds to be able to increase the starting pay. Those positions be able to attract some others. It just hasn't, hasn't been up there yet, because right now, especially now that the uh, if the CARES Act funding, when it came to the stimulus and the actual unemployment has run out and that's kind of up in the air, uh I think that may be why we're seeing a lot more applicants. So, but uh it's, yes, fourteen and a quarter.
One thing I did notice this month, we're still running about fifty percent citations for traffic stops. But I will say that on Facebook, we actually had uh some comments that they saw the police now riding tickets. And every comment I saw was a favorable comment, that they were all in favor of the police department getting out there, riding tickets and catching speeders, so uh guess we'll see what the results of that'll be. Anybody else have anything?
Um Josh, I had asked for you to check with other like cable providers and so on as far as possibly moving in the city. Have you had any chance to work on that? I know it's the budget and everything, but.
Yeah, we did. Uh actually, Mike and I had a Zoom conference with a company today. Mike, you want to, you want to kind of let Scott in on what we found out today?
Sure. We, we've started reaching out to a couple of the providers that are in various parts of the city. A T and T is in some areas, Pathways in some. Um Next Link has got some fiber in the ground, but the connectivity hasn't been all that great from what I'm hearing. Hughes Nets, another. Most of that stuff is, is antenna-based, similar to what you're dealing with now. Uh United Co-op is actually starting up an internet service. And they're completing their loops, but right now they're targeting just their service area for electric service before they start branching out. The, they are going to be in Heritage too. They're already putting lines in the ground over there. Mockingbird, they're going to be in, in, in a lot of the western parts of the city. And then some a little down south, um they're going to be working on service lines, uh including Joshua Meadows. They've gotten a lot of requests to go into Mountain Valley. They're looking at that. They're not making any commitments at this point. But that is an area that, uh that they're looking at. Uh but the there's a lot of people already in the ground around here, and so that's, that's driving part of it too. Right now in Joshua, none of their distribution is set up, but it's, it's coming very shortly. Uh and there's a few other places that we've sent some requests for information on, and they just haven't gotten back with us. But we're, uh we're working to uh to get that information and try and have a written report ready for you next month. Okay, now when you said they're thinking about going into Mountain Valley, that is the older part of Mountain Valley, not the? Yeah, they, they had indicated that they've gotten several requests in that area. It's something they're looking at, but they don't have a timeframe, because right now they are focused on existing customers where they're delivering electricity. Okay.
They're actually going to be using the lines, right? And then they're correct, they're not going to be going in ground, so they're going to be doing a lot of, a lot of theirs on their, on their poles. Is what I understood.
Now, the way they're talking, the way they explained today, and Josh, if you heard something different, uh step in, but it sounded to me like they're planning on mostly fiber.
Right, but they, they didn't say that they were going to run their fiber on their existing poles and not go underground.
That is not the way they explained it to me.
Yeah, see, Joshua, maybe, yeah, we're underground all over.
Okay. Okay, maybe my letter was different because their main poles run through our property.
Right.
And then they have, I guess, then.
They'll probably come in on those and they go down.
Well, I think, I think there could be some areas where they've got above-ground lines that they, that they go in there too, but the new infrastructure is all going in ground. I look forward to your report next month. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, anybody else have any other questions? Scott, then we're going to convene into a consecutive session at seven thirty-seven. Uh pursuant to the provisions of chapter five five one, subchapter D, Texas Government Code, to discuss the following. Uh semi-annual performance assessment for the city manager and city annual performance assessment for the city secretary. So Alice, if you'll shut everything down and we'll do yours first.
Okay. Okay.
All right, we're back up. All right, uh in order with section five five one of the Texas Government Code, we're going to reconvene. Uh we don't have any action to consider. Uh does anybody have any future agenda items they'd like to make at this time?
I have a question about trash, uh trash recycle. Are we uh close to reviewing that? Is it time to review that?
I will check the contract, Mike. I want to say it's twenty twenty-two. I say we just signed that from last year.
Yeah.
I want to say it's twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three, but I'll check the contract. I'll give it Mike in the morning to check it.
I was just personally had a question about it, so I'll, I'll contact you through the week.
Okay.
And just ask a question about recycle. I'm, I'm wanting to go up to a larger bin and maybe check to, to see if we can get a different bin, maybe this, this next contract, and we'll put that in there.
Okay.
Everything about. Yeah, recycling.
Well, you can have multiple bins.
That's.
Now, I said these are up there in the city. I'll get asked for that. I'll come up there in the city, we'll dump out like three.
Yeah, I just. Yeah, I, I, I'd rather have one big green tub, big green.
I know a lot of people, everybody's going to have that one. Have the green tub, let's go to the, they fix it up.
Yeah. So I just want to.
All right, anybody else have any other future agenda items? If not, they will adjourn and thank you all. Bye.
See you all later.
Thanks, Jerry. Oh, Terry's still there.